I am recording now.
Well, thanks to all of you all for coming in and start off, thank you for agreeing to jump into something like this and take the slings and arrows that come with it and this being one of those eras. Thanks for coming in. Maybe if we could, we'll start at this end of the table and come around, just maybe give a quick couple of minutes on why you decided to run and what's compelling you to public service?
Sure. So my name's Donna Goodman Campbell and I decided to run because I am tired of watching our city get bogged down in these divisive arguments about issues that, you know, often are not the priorities of people of Bend. And through my work, I led the campaign to designate Badlands Wilderness, gosh, 10 years ago. And that campaign gained the support of over 200 local businesses, some of Central Oregon's top employers like Mount Bachelor and Brooks Resources, Central Oregon Association of Realtors, and then ranchers and neighboring landowners. And so it was a really diverse group of supporters in the end that we were able to bring together around this effort. But my job in that campaign was to to bring together all of those disparate voices and find a path forward that was going to work for everybody. So that experience shaped me as a leader who understands that when you listen to every voice and even if you think people want to get on their side of you on an issue, you know, I can remember reaching out to people at Central Oregon Association of Realtors and thinking, hmm, well, why not? Why not, you know, ask them what they think about this and see if they agree that, you know, that Bend's quality of life and our environment are important things to protect? And it turned out they did. So, you know, that experience, as I said, shaped me as, you know, someone who understands that when you do listen to every voice and try to find common ground, you can actually move forward on implementing solutions. Sometimes it's actually a lot faster than those contentious arguments. And then in 2016, I ran for state representative and that experience, I, you know, as you all know, I was running against a wealthy incumbent who's well-known. And so I knew I needed to try and make up for that by working really hard. And so the way I did that is knocking on thousands of doors. I think it was over 4,000 doors in the end that I knocked on, every neighborhood in Bend. And so that was, again, just an incredible experience for somebody who aspires to leadership because I got to talk with people one-on-one all over Bend and hear their concerns, hear the challenges they're facing. And, you know, again, I was surprised to find that even though people's concerns, you know, vary based on the neighborhood that they live in and unique concerns that related to where they live in Bend, there were a lot of commonalities and a lot of people, I'd say, most people in Bend agree on the main challenges we face. And, you know, those were hands down more options for affordable housing, transportation system that works better for everyone and that isn't going to leave people stuck in traffic and without options to get where they need to go on a day-to-day basis. And then people were concerned about how fast we're growing. People want to make sure that, you know, as Bend grows, that we're doing it in a really thoughtful way, that we're planning ahead for the future and that we're not destroying the things that we love about Bend. So, you know, from my experience on the Badlands up to my experience running for state representative, you know, I've had a lot of time to think about those challenges and how we tackle them on city council. And so I'm excited to talk about some of those today.
Okay, yeah, my name is Victor Johnson. I moved here in 2014 from Atlanta. I was hired to be a music director at a nonprofit preschool called Carmus Creators. And so I packed up everything and moved out here, having never been to the Northwest, but quickly fell in love with Bend and saw the beauty here. And the people built a great music program. But then two years later, the people who founded the school, they were suspended and then banned for apparently mismanaging hundreds of thousands of dollars. Resulted in my position being eliminated and I was like, oh, which was quite a big challenge for me. And really forced me to overcome this major adversity. And at times I felt, you know, hopelessness and despair. It's been challenging finding livability in Bend. Over these past few years, I've also become part of the music and art community. I recorded a CD at Sanson Studios in 2015 and began a project, writing songs for victims of violence. And I recently created a group called Central Oregon Open Mics to create more exposure for the open mic scene here and to support up-and-coming local musicians. And there's been a lot of conflict between the music and arts community and with the city, particularly the situation at the Century Center. But my main motivation for running is to be a voice for that community and so that it's represented. And there's been cool solutions like having music at the Central Oregon Distillers. And I think we can, by working together and different voices being heard, we can come up with solutions that work for everybody. Over this past year, also I've participated in things like Bridging Oregon. It was a four-part workshop created by Oregon Humanities. And we met people from all different communities in Central Oregon to talk about the problems and differences of opinion and how to bridge that. And figuring out what divides us. And it was just really eye-opening and it got me out of my shell a little bit because I tend to be kind of quiet and just stay at home. I also participated in a program called Shadows to Light, which was an eight-week program about transforming shadows into light and creating a world that works for all beings. I see a lot of dissension and conflict, particularly on social media, and people just arguing with each other, getting into ego battles. I went to a Quaker college called Guilford in North Carolina and I learned about conflict resolution and working together in non-confrontational ways and being heard, which I think is important to create unity. Then another thing that I'm really passionate about is standing up to bullying, particularly in schools. I have several friends, I know that's a real issue for them. They've even pulled their kids out of school to homeschool them because of bullying. And when I, like, Deshaun Adler was a teen at some high school who took his own life last December, it affected me really deeply. And I even wrote him a song that night. And so I would love to have an opportunity to create a program that brings musicians, local musicians and artists into schools to work with kids and address bullying.
Great. Andrew?
Yeah. I'm obviously Andrew Davis and I'm running for a couple of different reasons. I'm a born and raised Bendite and this community has meant a lot to me over the years. I've been very grateful to have been able to grow up here in a place that now is so desirable and so many people want to find an inroad to come here. But growing up, sort of had this perspective that if I was going to be able to be successful here, I was likely going to have to go somewhere else and earn a college degree and get a career going and then hope that maybe someday I could come back. There wasn't a lot of opportunity here. And through happy accidents, coincidence, whatever we want to call it, was offered the opportunity to stay at Central Oregon Community College and then OST Cascades under my undergraduate period. Somewhere along the lines Bend got really, really interesting, even more interesting. Suddenly, people from all over the nation were talking about this place and I thought if they're talking about it, there's probably something going on here. Was fortunate to be able to move into a career pretty quickly and set down some roots here. And now, part of my impetus for running is really wanting to see what we can do to address the gap between median household income and median household price, which I think is, for me, the single greatest issue that our community is facing because families are here, they want to be here, but we have a pretty low median household income and we have a pretty sizable median household price. And that, those folks that are sitting in that gap in between them are really struggling to be successful. And so I want to work at a city level to be able to address those problems, to work to increase the supply of housing we have, to meet the demand of people that are coming here and simultaneously make sure that we've got developable land for people to bring businesses and industry that can pay wages that match the skill set. I think we have an amazing flood of talent coming out of our university and our community college. And unfortunately, a lot of that intellectual talent is getting exported because folks can't find work here that matches the new skills that they have. And then at a slightly larger level, I decided to run now because I have been disheartened with what I've seen politics do at a more global level where it's descended from civil discourse into arrows and bars and not the kind that we're here to experience today, but the kind where people just look at each other and say, well, you believe differently than me, you're, you know, you're wrong. And it's not just you're wrong, it's vehemently, it's violently. I am fortunate to be in a position where I have the time and the ability to be able to run. And so I felt like I had some obligation to run because there's a, from that perspective, I think we can get back to a place where people can have moderate conversations and disagree, but still sit down as friends and colleagues and share meals and share ideals, so.
As we move into the next round of questions, thanks everybody for your intro. Just so we can hopefully keep this to an hour, I ask that just try to keep it to a minute for your responses for these questions. I know some of them are complex, so I apologize. Again, have to be succinct, but you know, as counselors, you give people three minutes to tell their thing at the meeting, so that's good practice. What should we tackle first? Judy?
My, my, my. Do I get to go to my favorite one?
Sure, you go to your favorite one.
Lay it on us, Judy.
Lay it on it, right. Okay, so the septic to sewer issue is a major issue in this, particularly for several hundred people in the southeast part of Bend.
Including you?
Yeah. But there have been various proposals and various discussions. So I guess I'm asking, what is, what is your position on how that, how that should be handled?
Anybody want to jump in first?
Let me, Victor, start since we started.
I don't have a comment on that issue.
Yeah, I think septic to sewer is the big issue that's got to be solved right away. And I went to one of the listening sessions because I really wanted to hear how it impacted people. And it's clear to me from that that $25,000 is too big of a number and $250 a month is too big of a number. And so right now, my, my current thought process on addressing that would be twofold. The first would be see if the city can go back and work to do part of the work to get that overall $25,000 number down and then work on different financing options so that people can get away from that $250 a month number. Because to those people, the number might as well be a million dollars. Folks who have lived there for years and who are now retired, they can't just go out and suddenly make that happen. If that solution is impossible, then I'm a proponent of going to a rate increase citywide where everyone bears the burden to share that. Because I feel like the compassionate part of being a community member is saying, I'm not willing to let my neighbor lose his or her home.
Yeah, this is an issue that I actually heard about quite a bit knocking on doors in southeast and Judy's neighborhood and elsewhere in Bend. And so I've been following it for a little while and I'm glad to see the way the city is handling it so far. It's been, one, including people who are impacted by the issue and having a citizen committee looking at solutions that people who actually live in the area. And so, you know, I think that the different steps that Andrew laid out are important, especially looking at financing to make sure that the overall cost, both monthly and total, is something that people can afford and not lose their homes. Looking at a local improvement district where, you know, there's a slight tax increase for people living in those neighborhoods where they need to connect up to help fund some of that. And then looking at a safety net fund that would be funded by, you know, with the cost shared by everybody in Bend just a little bit, where you, you know, everybody has a slight fee on their utility bill and that goes into a fund to help those who really are going to be, not going to be able to afford this expense. At the same time, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, getting onto sewer is somewhat of a home improvement. It will improve people's property values overall. And so it's not as if this money that people will be spending is just kind of going into a hole and, you know, they're, they're losing that. Hopefully that will increase the value of these homes and these neighborhoods in the long term. But at this point, it is important for the city to work with, very closely with people impacted by this and make sure that people aren't losing their homes and that it's something that people can afford.
Just as an add-on to that question, and I'll come to you, Andrew, we have, why do you think, why do you think this has rolled out the way it has? I mean, why is it that, I mean, the state law's been on the books for ever?
Yeah.
And why are we patching this?
Yeah. My belief on that is, I think that the city failed to plan for it 20 years ago when the plan was annexed. And I think if we had been thoughtful then, this would be, we would not be talking about it and we could spend our time talking about any other hot-button issue that had not been planned for. In that regard, for me, the critical component of being a city counselor is this kind of strategic planning and advanced thinking. Bend went from small to mid-size large so quickly, I think it never really realized how to plan 20 years in the future. It was easy to deal with things on the short term and I think this is, for me, a classic example of that.
Yes, I mean, we need to be more thoughtful about how we're planning for the future and building out our infrastructure and making sure that lands that we're looking to annex next are going to be served by infrastructure right away and so that we don't get stuck in this situation in the past in the future. And, and just, I understand how frustrating it is for people living in these neighborhoods and looking at what was, what was done because, you know, a lot of our development was rushed or just, you know, wasn't, people in the city weren't paying enough attention to making sure that we were prepared and able to bring those areas in with infrastructure serving them.
Can I follow up with one on that as well? In that, in that regard, one of the issues involved here, which people seem to ignore a lot, is the fact that Southeast Interceptor was brought into place not just to serve the people in the southeast. In fact, as much as anything, it's to basically deal with the overflow from the west side of the city. So I guess going back to the quote-unquote, both of you have talked about some cost sharing, you know, how, how do you think that should play into this?
I think that's a really good point and something that, you know, as a counselor, I would see my role as somewhat of a, you know, kind of interpreter or educator for people, helping people understand why the city is doing what they're doing, why they're going around things the way that they are. A lot of times there's misunderstandings about, about this type of thing. I think we actually all received an email from a woman who was upset that, you know, when the city can't fund projects, then they just look to add a little bit onto my utility bill. And in this case, you know, I can see pretty clearly that that's, that's not the case. There's a bigger picture about, yeah, our, this capacity of our sewer system.
And I think it's a communication piece. People, as I've been knocking on doors and talking with people in this process, it's amazing to me to realize what people often don't realize about how our city functions. And I think this is a piece of that. And it's important communication because we have folks in the, in the north part of town who are going to be in the same position at some point. And I'm assuming that they're also not going to want to pay $25,000 or $250 a month. And so helping people understand that this keeps the entire city's utilities functioning so that, you know, you go and you flush your toilet and it flushes, that's a pretty big deal.
I'm curious just about the LED then. You know, you mentioned that as a possible solution. If it is tying in to the west side, you know, is that fair to say only the people that are actually hooking up should have an LED?
Perhaps not. I didn't realize that until I received.
Tacking on, I mean, that's the other side of that with the proposal for an LED is that those aren't the only beneficiaries of this. So why should they, you know, assume the entire cost effectively?
That's really good to know.
Well, you know, we have all these classic conversations that happen in Bend. We've just covered one of them. Another one is, is just TRT funds. That's been a large discussion. Do you think, how do we want to frame this one?
Transient room tax.
Right, transient room tax. Do you think that the city is, is at an appropriate level of how much it's receiving in transient room tax? And if not, what are, what changes would you like to see in that? Would you like to go first, Andrew?
I'm happy to. Let me make sure I understand your question. You're wanting to know, are we spending an appropriate amount?
Are we allocating, are we collecting, is the city collecting an appropriate amount of transient room tax to fund the general fund? And if not, what?
Right.
What other alternatives?
I think for me, the important consideration around the transient room tax is that it's regulated by the state. So we, as we raise it, we're also going to be pumping more money into tourism promotion and things of this nature. So I think it provides us a really good source of revenue for the city. And I think in that regard, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with where we are. I like, I think Bend needs, Bend needs, sorry, let me figure out how to articulate what I'm really trying to say for you in a way that's not just a half-sentence. I think it is appropriate. I think we're, we're collecting a great amount of revenue that helps go into our city infrastructure, our city budget. And it also helps us continue to promote Bend in a way that people realize this is a great place that they can come and visit and bring their business and then someday perhaps move.
Yeah, so that would be the, the side question to this is that some folks that are running for council or mayor have said, we should stop promoting Bend.
Yeah.
So would you, you are in support of that?
I disagree with that. I think part of a vibrant economy and a vibrant community is making sure that people are welcomed and come in. And I think tourism is an incredibly important part of our economy. I think we need other industries here as well. But I think that our hotels, our restaurants, our small businesses, they thrive because people come here and they bring their vacation dollars. And then some of them are fortunate and go, hey, Bend is a pretty happening place. Let's move here and let's relocate our business. So, and buy homes and set down roots and bring political diversity, economic diversity, all, all the things that make a community, in my opinion, whole.
Go back to my question?
Yeah, I think it's important and a good thing, a good source of income. But I think we could less, I don't think we need as much energy put into promoting Bend and tourism because I think Bend's really out there on the map and people know about Bend and they're, they're going to be here. And like, for example, Fall Fest is this weekend. And I'd spoken with a gallery owner downtown and he said, every time there's a big festival, he loses traffic all weekend because people put up big backings, which they're not technically, not even supposed to do, no one sees his gallery. So I want to find ways to support people like him more, local businesses, and put more effort into supporting the local artists and musicians and shop owners. Maybe do some smaller scale things that are more oriented and directed towards a local and not drawing in tourism.
So to your original question, yes, we are collecting the appropriate amount because we're collecting the maximum amount allowable by state law into our general fund. It's around 68% of the transient room tax dollars and the rest has to go to tourism promotion or tourism-related facilities. So that, or to me, is the key. I do think it's important that we keep promoting Bend to some extent because, as Andrew acknowledged, that, you know, it does, and Victor, it does play an important role in our economy. And you have a lot of people living here who are employed in sectors that are dependent on tourism in whole or in part. And it's bringing actual revenue into our general fund. So we do want to maintain that as an industry. However, I think there are really exciting ways that we could look at spending some of those dollars around tourism-related facilities, which is a fairly loosely defined term. And we don't want to push the legal limits of that too far and get ourselves sued. But I do think we want to think creatively about how, how we could use those. And one of my pet ideas that I would get really excited about is to look at how we could connect up our existing system of trails, the greenways that the city is looking at putting in on certain roads that are parallel to our arterial, that will be focused on people, people-oriented transportation of walking and biking, and connecting up all of those into a system where if people, you know, tourists especially, if they want to get out of their cars and not have to be stuck in traffic during their vacation, they can use that system of trails. That's something that could be used by locals and mitigate some of the problems that tourism is causing right now with traffic and pressure on our roads.
I'll take one. There's a lot of talk about affordable housing, you know, whether you're running for house district or you're running for the county or you're running for the city. What can you actually affect as a counselor? What would you try to affect in terms of the affordable housing crisis? I've lost track where we are, but I'll come to you.
So the city can do a lot. I think that, and the city is already doing a fair amount. We have a very forward-looking affordable housing fee. And so as a counselor, I would look to leverage that with incentives for builders, potential subsidies for true affordable housing projects that are aimed at people, you know, 30 to 60% below the median income. And really focusing on making sure that the land that we just recently brought into our urban growth boundary and land that we're prioritizing for redevelopment as these opportunity areas, like the central district, that that land is development-ready and that we're getting the infrastructure to serve that land as quickly as possible so that construction can start on that as quickly as possible. Because we do have a supply problem, but it's a supply of a specific type of housing that there's an unmet demand for. It's, it's housing in the middle of the market from median income, even a little bit above median income to, you know, the lowest income people living here. And so, you know, that, that median income is, I have it here actually, $50,000 to $75,000 a year. So we're, you know, we're talking about teachers, nurses, engineers, people who are making a decent wage and they can't find housing they can afford. We have an oversupply of housing serving people making, you know, $150,000 or more. So I would really focus on, one, making sure we're getting land development-ready and then, two, using all the policies we have at our disposal to make sure that housing that is built is affordable for the people who are working here now.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of that. I'm giving builders incentives and finding creative ways to use land and create, you know, like an artist collective, tiny houses. I've worked in Metford really well, especially with like homeless people that don't have anywhere to go. That could be a way to give them hope and it's a progressive kind of new way to address homelessness. And, you know, creating a village of tiny houses.
Andrew?
Yeah, I think there's a, a number of things the city can do. I do see this largely as a supply and demand issue. I think Bend, Bend does have a housing shortage. There's, there's not, there's something like 760 houses on the market currently in Bend. And that's not nearly enough to keep up with the demand of our, our growth. So for me, annexing the current UGB that's been approved by the state is critical and getting the infrastructure there and make that ground ready. Because when we've got, when we don't have land that has infrastructure there, that makes the price of land where infrastructure is available go up and that makes homes more expensive for builders and makes them more expensive for homeowners. And so that's a piece of it. I'm also a strong proponent that the city needs to be immediately figuring out what the next phase of the UGB is so that we don't end up in a, in a situation where we are stuck because we've done that before. And we know that sometimes we go to the state and we are overly aggressive and then they come back to us and they say, that's not going to work. You can't have 8,800 acres like you wanted last time. You can have 2,800 acres. And so I think we need to be really thoughtful about that so that we can do strategic expansion and not just let things run wild, but really be thoughtful about where does Bend need to develop, what land makes sense for single-family homes, what land makes sense for, for more dense development. I think things like the central district are really great. And that's a more expensive part of our city, so I don't foresee builders coming in there and providing homes that are really affordable to the average citizen in Bend. And then the other side. And then the other side for me of affordable housing is, is jobs. If we can raise the median household wage, we can make homeownership more affordable for people. So that for me is things that, some of those the city's doing, like enterprise zones. I think those are an awesome tool to work with businesses and say, come here and we'll provide you a break if you're gonna pay a hundred and fifty percent of household wages for, for a certain number of employees. I love that kind of creative thinking. So, and at a city level, we can do all of those things and do really forward thinking.
So, can I follow up, Judy?
Yeah.
No, 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 go ahead. So, annexing the land, putting in the hopefully required sewer line.
Let's just put my subject.
Go for it.
But at the same time, the city's being asked to dredge Mirapond. So definitely have some, gonna have some priority questions coming up if you're a councilor. Victor, I'm gonna start with you on this one. What's your position on Mirapond and the city's role in paying for it?
I think it wouldn't be fair to create an exorbitant cost to taxpayers to dredge Mirapond. So maybe, I think it should be left alone or that's the biggest issue I see is the expensive.
Yeah. Andrew?
Yeah. I think we need to figure out a way to dredge Mirapond. I think it's, it's clear that the owner of the dam doesn't want to remove it and that's their prerogative. And so I think in light of that, we've got a problem with that silt buildup. I don't think any of us in particular, I shouldn't say many, there are some. I don't think many of us want to see that become a wetland. And I think Mirapond is historic and it's iconic and it's part of Bend's culture and history. And because of that, I think every community stakeholder has, has a place in that, including the city, in terms of helping to cover those costs. I think parks has a, has a play, a piece to play in that. I think the city has a piece to play. And I think that the landowners have a piece to play, a piece to pay. It's hard to say that ten times fast. Because it's gonna, it's gonna directly impact everybody. So for me, it's partnership. And really getting, for me, it's, we need to get the people in the room and, and say, listen, we know we have a problem and we have, we have to come to an agreement. And we've got to be willing to talk and compromise and talk about how that does fit into the priorities. Because if we let it go much longer, it's gonna be taken out of our hands.
This is one of those issues I've gotten frustrated watching over the years. And, you know, right now, we've acknowledged the current reality is that the land under the pond is privately owned by Mirapond LLC. So, to me, the burden is on them to, you know, decide whether or not they want to dredge and then figure out how to pay for that. So it's not something that I've heard a lot about from people in Bend. If like, we really need to dredge Mirapond, that's one of my priorities for the city. So, you know, if I were hearing that, I would maybe think differently about, about how it should be paid for. But at this point, I think it's a, it's a pretty, it would be a pretty tough sell to me on why that's one of the things that we should prioritize limited funds around is dredging Mirapond. Like I said, if I was hearing from people about that, that might change. Besides, you know, kind of special interest people who have, who have a vested interest in, in dredging the pond. We have had discussions in this community three or four years ago where we were talking about a hybrid solution. That was before Mirapond LLC purchased the land under the pond and when Pacific Power was talking about removing the dam. So, we can go back to those conversations and look at some of the solutions that came out of those, which were, for me, you know, real win planning for the community. So something like that, I would be more interested in, in looking at putting city dollar stores. But until we're in that place again, I'm gonna be a tough sell.
While we're talking about land and property and that, what is your position on Juniper Ridge and what should be done there? It's been a sort of a consistent, constant issue for probably a couple decades now, most of that, so.
Guys? Okay. I mean, I, I believe there's still an existing, you know, master plan for that area. And I think we ought to, you know, look at that and see, you know, if that, make sure it still makes sense for where we're at as a community, but get moving on that and, you know, and, and look at developing that as an employment center and as new housing potential. So, you know, I think that, and, and potentially looking at if there are parts of that land that we don't need, can those be sold to help pay for the infrastructure that will be needed to serve that area and bring that area fully into, you know, to be ready for development? So at the same time, you know, acknowledging that we also have a, you know, we have people who are, are camping there because they don't have anywhere else to live, making sure that we are starting to address, you know, the issues that are coming from that now and looking at how, you know, we can provide transitional housing for people who want it and address some of the issues that are currently coming out of the camps with enforcement, better enforcement. Look at what other communities are doing to address problems like this because we're not alone in that.
As continuing on from what I was saying earlier, I love the idea of creating a tiny house village, community, putting up community center there. I've visited the one on Harriman before. And create, I guess, pedestrian friendly, kind of some green space, just, yeah.
Juniper Ridge's been the elephant in the room since I was about fifteen years old, I think. I remember when it came on, when we, when it came into the picture and everybody, okay, we're gonna get a university out there. And that was right before I was gonna graduate from high school and that was, everybody was excited about that. And obviously, that's not gonna happen. And so, I, I think that's an area that for me would be ripe for us to look at and bringing in some industry and getting some jobs brought into our community out there. I think it would have to be the right thing because obviously, the way it integrates into that neighborhood and the folks that have lived in that area for a long time. But I think we've already got Les Schwab and Sutera out there. And I think we need to do what we can to try to, to work with other businesses that want to come out there and, and get online. I think we need to just get moving out there and we'll stop talking about what do we do with it and then make a decision in the forward. And also acknowledge, yeah, the homeless folks that are out there living. I think we need to work with our community partners that are experts in that and figure out how we can treat those people compassionately and help them find a proper way to transition so that we can do that effectively.
I know a lot of folks have been, you know, throwing around the idea of, of figuring out a dedicated homeless village somewhere, whether it's county or city or a joint project. So I'm curious about how you all feel about that as a possible solution to address homelessness in our community? And if you have other solutions that you've considered? Definitely, there's hundreds of folks out there, not just at the campus, but.
Right.
Yeah, should we go to you first?
Yeah, I honestly don't know, I, I don't have a lot of expertise in that subject area when it comes to creating camps. I can see some problems that that could create in our community. I, I think that there's some challenges that folks would have with, with at least concerns that they would have around safety, around noise, around all kinds of different things. And so I think we have to be sensitive to that. And simultaneously, we need to be compassionate to people who are in our community, no matter where they fall on the spectrum of living in the nicest neighborhood or, or choosing not to own a home and not to have a place to call their own. I, I really believe that the city's not gonna become an expert in homelessness. That's where I think we really have to rely on some local organizations that are, that have that expertise, places like Bethlehem and Shepherd's House, even state organizations to, to partner with us to help us figure out, okay, how do we do this thoughtfully? How do we do it effectively? How do we communicate about the issue? And how do we really get everybody to sort of understand? I mean, there's, I think it's, this is one of those issues where it's often easy for people to say, yes, we need to do that, but don't do it near me. And that, I think in particular, will come up in this area. So I think it's gonna be a lot of education, a lot of communication with city, citywide folk, folks citywide.
Jenna?
So I, I have had a lot of conversations with people who have experienced homeless, are homelessness, are experiencing homelessness. And so I think, you know, there, there's a broad spectrum of, of people, very few of them who are choosing not to, you know, not to have a home. I think most, the vast majority of people would prefer to, to have a secure and safe place to, you know, to call home. There are some people who would prefer to, to camp, given the choice between camping and, and being at a traditional homeless shelter. And so that is a, you know, that is something that, you know, a desire that exists amongst people experiencing homelessness, just for the sheer, you know, for the privacy and the independence that that, that creates. And so, you know, creating a space where that's in a controlled environment, I think could be, have been changes for the city. Perhaps it's not a long-term solution, but right now, what we have is, you know, uncontrolled camping on public land, both at Juniper Ridge, city-owned land, and on our public lands, you know, that are federally owned around, around Bend. And so that puts a lot of pressure on resources and, and the city in terms of enforcement. So, we have a lot of other communities that have done similar things. We can look to, you know, Portland has, has finally kind of made Dignity Village an official, you know, entity. And we can look to that, to that experience that Portland went through. Eugene has Opportunity Village, it's a tiny home village that's a comortal pilot project. But in the little research I've done into that, I saw that, you know, law enforcement there has said that they have fewer, fewer calls and fewer complaints about safety issues and, and crime in Opportunity Village than they do in, in like a comparable, you know, apartment complex. That might just be Eugene because it's college students, but. But, but, you know, I think that there are lots of examples we can look to and, and the city does need to be out ahead of this problem. I do think that the city needs to be looking at homelessness as a part of the spectrum of affordable housing issues we're having, right? Because how are people supposed to move from transitional housing into a home that they can afford when we don't have homes for people who are making the, the income that the vast majority of our population makes?
Victor?
I think it's important to address homelessness and to practice compassion and empathy. Because everyone's important, there are no throwaway people. And being proactive will really benefit everyone in the long run. I'm wearing a necklace, actually. I was playing guitar in the alleyway in downtown and in the middle of the song, a homeless person walked up and put it on my neck. I've worn it ever since. But, yeah, just getting more involved and, yep, maybe having a camp that has some guidance and organization to it, like they've done in Eugene and Portland. And, yeah, because homeless people need a place to go, we can't just displace them.
So, just looking at our time, we have, we really have to have one more question and then we would ask you guys to sort of wrap up your, your pitch to us, I guess. What have we not covered that you guys want to cover? Let's see.
Thought you were asking us for half a second.
Yeah.
You can read it, anything you want. It's a big statement.
Oh, I, I've, I've got one, actually, I don't know. There's currently, ballot measure one oh five repeals the, the state law that has been in effect for decades that forbids the use of state or local resources to applicant, those violating the immigration law, it's sometimes referred to as sanctuary law. There's a technical legality there, but nevertheless, what is your position on? I mean, currently, right now, you know, Bend, please don't go out. That's not part of their fail away to go out and check and see if people are legal immigrants or not. Are you in favor or opposed to that?
I'm starting with Jenna.
I'm definitely voting no on measure one oh five. It's both an issue of compassion and, and resources. We, you know, we barely have the resources to, to keep our, our law enforcement professionals running, you know, efficiently and doing the job that they need to do for Oregon citizen, you know, for, for everybody living in Oregon and living here in Bend. And so, to be doing federal government's work of law enforcement would place a huge burden on our, our local and state law enforcement agencies. So, I'm not in favor of repealing that law.
Victor?
I agree there. I'm really, I think it's important to provide sanctuary for people and have compassion towards refugees. And perfectly good people, their lives have been turned upside down. And I don't agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, working at the college, I, we often work with undocumented students. And so I think this, to me, is not the focus that we need to, it's not the focus of local police. I think we've, police are there worried about crime and not just seek out whether or not someone is here with, with the legal status. And so, for me, it's not.
You're voting no.
Uh, yeah. I'm trying to figure out a way to say anything. Excellent folks have said.
I'm glad we all agree.
Doesn't seem like a big deal.
You know, we have not done any fun questions in this round of endorsements.
Yeah, what the hell?
It's so much less fun than we used to be. I'm sorry.
That would be a fun question. I thought we'd do a fun question and closing.
What, like what, what drink, what's your favorite?
What's your favorite cocktail or cocktail?
Uh, well, right now, I'm, I'm a mom of a seven-month-old, breastfeeding mom. So I like seltzer water a lot, but occasionally I will have a beer. Love our local beers, so, yeah, water.
Okay. I, I drink water like a fish, but I like local craft brews. And occasionally I have a, occasionally I'll have a martini. My friend recently passed away, turned me on to those. Every once in a while, I'll have one.
What's your go-to craft beer?
Dischutes Brewery.
Anything to shoot, that's not, that's not specific.
Alan Worthing's, I mean, there's so many Dischutes from Worthing, Dischutes.
But no specific beer at Dischutes?
I like Porters, dark stouts.
Andrew?
Since you asked specifically cocktail, my go-to would be a Sazerac.
Okay. Very popular these days.
They're delightful. Drake has a phenomenal one.
I don't even know what that is. Okay, good.
It sounds weird, but it's good.
So just to wrap up, I'd like to, you to share how, anything else that we missed? Any other issue that's important to you in the city? And then also, how you, how your skills or experience separates you from your opponents? And you can have longer than a minute, but this is more like two minutes.
Ninety seconds.
This one's yours to start.
Okay. Yeah, this is kind of a learning experience for me. I've never run tourney office before. But I was basically just driven by my passion for the arts and music and education. I've been working with preschool kids for eight years doing music. And we have fun and listen to David Bowie and Prince and Blondie. Because our children are our future, so I think it's really important to... And that's another thing, I think more people move to Bend, the more need there is for preschool education and just real viable options for that because it's important. That's a really important stage where kids are really developing and they're our future. So that's two things I'm really passionate about. And also, illivability continues to be a big issue for me. Not just me, but other people where we have so many talented people in Bend that are artistic and creative and I really want to see them supported and being encouraged to thrive and to flourish. So, yeah, I'm learning to get more comfortable talking to people. I've been playing guitar and piano for over thirty years, so I'm much more used to sitting on a stage and singing.
We'll, we'll do that next round.
You'd like the floor with me.
Singing answers.
Sherry Elk editorial board.
But, yeah, thank you for how to rehearse.
Do that. Andrew?
Yeah. One thing we haven't had a chance to talk about is, we've talked about it sort of tangentially, but directly, is strategic planning and long-range strategic planning and how critical I think that's gonna be for the success of our community and Bend moving forward. And that's something that I know I bring specifically to this process. Having gone out and done my MBA and then had the opportunity to work on a thesis that focused, I wrote on strategic planning specific to a, a college context. But I think there's, there was a lot that I took away from that, just about the value of doing that strategic planning and knowing clearly where we want to go as a city and getting people mostly moving in the same direction and then helping them understand if you don't, if you don't agree with every component of this, there's still a place for you. This is where we need to go and this is how we need to get there. And I think that because of... And I think that because of the way Bend has developed with the boom and the bust and then the last boom, it's just something that fell by the wayside and I think it's something that has to come back front and center. Um, that's something that I know I bring. It's part of what I do in my work, um, part of the skill set that I have and, and with that, the ability to bring together really diverse ideas and viewpoints. I work in student conduct and, um, most people don't know anything about student conduct, but one of the things that you learn quickly in that field is that you never make everyone happy, but you do have to work with people to get to a solution, um, to help the campus community, the individual and the people that are impacted by their behaviors as whole as possible. And I feel like our city is very similar in that context. And so for me, I think it would be a very natural, um, related work and work that matters to me because I want this to be a place where my kids can be successful someday. Um, and right now, I think if, if we don't do the hard intentional work, ten years from now, fifteen years from now, when my oldest son wants to choose to live here, he may not have the ability to choose to live here. And so I think we need to, we need to really put in the time and the effort to, to make this a place where people can afford to live and raise families.
So I would say what, what sets me apart from my opponents is just my, my experience of both working, um, on the Badlands campaign and my work on public lands, um, bringing people together, um, with a huge variety of opinions, a lot of people who think very differently from me, being able to work with those people, um, and, and find common ground, find those ideas that people have in common, um, so that we can, you know, come together around a, a common goal, a common solution. And then actually turning that into legislation and government policy. Um, I think that's a big, that's a big piece of this as well, is the ability to, to bring all those things together and then see how that comes through in, in government policies. And then, you know, just my experience of, of knocking outdoors and talking with people all around Bend, um, hearing people's concerns specifically, I've had a lot of time to think about those solutions, um, both big picture and then just specific policies that the city could be, could be working on. Um, so, you know, I think that, that experience, those two experiences combined, um, really set me apart in terms of, um, my ability to, um, understand what, um, the people in Bend, um, really need and want from our city government and then turning that into, to policy and action on our, on our biggest challenges. Um, the other thing that makes me, you know, qualified in terms of, um, being a strong voice for people in the community is just, um, where my support is coming from. I think it's very important for, um, for people, even locally, um, to look at where the money, um, that political candidates are using to, to reach out to voters is coming from. Um, and right now, we're in a situation in Bend where, um, a lot of money is being poured into local campaigns. People might be surprised, tens of thousands of dollars are being poured into local campaigns from really three main special interest PACs in this community. Um, and Andrew has received, um, last time I looked, um, I believe it was around thirty-seven thousand dollars, um, from, from these three PACs. And that's more than a lot of people in Bend make in a year. So that's something that I think voters just need to be aware of and thinking about how that might influence, um, you know, how our leaders are making decisions and whether they're, they're really speaking, um, for people or whether they're speaking for special interests. So I think that's something that's really important for, um, both the source to, to look at and, and it's public information. You can go on the Oregon Secretary of State website and look at where people are getting in mind.
I think we can figure that out.
Well, no, I, I mean, I know you can, but I, I don't know that a lot of people watching realize that. So, um, so, you know, I, I'm working really hard, um, to hear from people in Bend and I, you know, as, as a city councillor, I would always be working for all of Bend and, and working really hard for the people. So, hope to have your endorsement. Thank you.
Well, that concludes our endorsement. I appreciate all the, uh, time it takes for one post position, the knocking on doors, the...
Yeah, for a position that pays so much.
Big bucks.
But thank you all again.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, you made the big bucks.